They're gonna continue and continue to do this. You know, a year ago, the Democrats in the antitrust subcommittee talked about breaking up Big Tech. You don't hear that conversation going on as of late because much of it was since we could screw this speech during the meeting. When the election really wanted to
I see, I see Woody.
Well, I don't see you, though. I got all kinds of stuff on my screen. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Woody.
Well, I can't see nothing.
Watch me.
Yeah, I can't either. I can see you, Woody.
I see nothing. What did Diane do to this?
I see you, Paul.
That's good. We're having a problem seeing.
No Carrie, yes.
I see you, Paul, but way down on the bottom of my screen.
Yeah, yeah. And you're next to me. Can't see Tommy yet. He's not listed on there. There he is, and Harold, but.
Oh, this is messed up. I'm gonna sign out and try to sign back in, okay?
Okay. We're right here.
Okay.
Ah, that's Craig.
Uh, Craig Curtin from GHD.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Okay.
I think Russ Cleclamp's also gonna be joining on shortly.
All right. Is Harold in yet?
I'm here, Paul. I don't know if you just
How you doing?
I'm doing fine, sir.
Let's see, we're waiting for Tommy. Tommy's here. Okay, Woody's here.
Okay, Woody's here, Paul's here, Craig from GHD's here.
And we're looking for Tommy.
Tommy, I think is gonna be late, uh, Paul.
Oh, is he?
Yes.
Okay. All right, uh, I guess we'll get this started. Uh, minutes. Okay, the meeting will, uh, will be, is open at, uh, four forty-five. We're gonna knock off a few minutes to check on the, uh, review and approve, uh, the minutes of January eleventh. Uh, do we have copies of that, uh, Diane?
Paul, I don't think she can hear you.
Oh, okay. Well, does anybody have copies of the minutes for January eleventh?
He was emailed the minutes, tell him, just review them and come in. Don't, don't worry about it just right now.
Okay.
Okay. Right, we're gonna open up. Gonna set up meeting dates. New meeting dates. Diane, do you have a calendar there? Anybody got a calendar in front of them?
Uh, I'm trying to get one up right now, Paul.
Okay, all right.
Is that you playing with all that stuff, Diane?
All right, for, for dates in February, next week is the first. You got, uh, February eighth is the second week. Uh, the week of the fourteenth and fifteenth is, you got President's Day, which I believe Town Hall is closed. And you got the twenty-second, so I would suggest probably the eighth and the twenty-second, Paul.
That's for February.
That's for February, correct.
Eighth and the twenty-second.
Yeah.
All right. For March.
March. You probably could almost do the same thing. Uh, you have, you have the eighth and the twenty-second, which is the second week and the fourth week.
Okay. And April.
You wanna do the twelfth and the twenty-sixth?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay. All right. We have a drain layers license renewal for, uh, Vesta Development Plymouth, Mass.
Uh, I believe Diane has all the paperwork on that, Chairman, and, uh, he did one connection and his work has been satisfactory, so I will recommend to approve him as a licensed drain layer for two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, yeah, we'll make a motion that we approve, uh, Vesta's, uh, development, uh, uh, grain layer license. We get a second on that?
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye. Woody?
Hello?
You in favor of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion passes. All right, the Dayton Water, uh, and North Dayton, uh, Fire Backflow Prevention Inspection Results.
I believe Diane has them, Paul. I haven't seen them yet. Uh, she, she, she has not notified me of any problems. Usually she would notify if there was any problems with that, so I'm assuming they have passed. At this point, uh, we can bring that up later in the meeting if you'd like.
Yeah, why don't we do that, just to make sure. Now, is Diane still, is she here or what?
Uh, I'm not sure. Uh, she's still working on her, on her end of logging in at this point.
Oh, all right, okay. All right, uh, the other one is the discussion with the Bristol County Building, uh, uh, Department is looking for a sign off on a new building.
Well, I would recommend if we could, uh, postpone that for now while we still have, uh, GHD here. Uh, Craig, if we can move up onto that and do some, uh, discussions with the pump station evaluation that GHD, uh, did for us.
Okay, we have Russ here?
Uh, no, we have Craig here.
Oh, okay.
Is Russ, uh, he's not logged in yet, Craig, at this point?
Yeah, no, yeah, he's on.
Okay.
Ah, you're not coming through with a voice, Russ.
He's on mute.
Nothing yet. Nothing yet. Can you hear us, Russell?
Yeah, it's, he said that the host is not letting him in.
Oh, okay. That's Diane now, all right.
My screen is up and running fine now, like it should be, so.
Yep.
All right.
I see you, Woody. I see Craig, and I see you, Paul.
Okay. Diane, is she on now?
Nope, I still
Not yet?
Not yet.
She is. Hello, Diane.
Hello?
Diane, you got a copy?
Didn't, can you hear me now? I just got unmuted.
Yeah, you're all set. Now, we got a full picture of you.
Hey, just what, just what you always wanted, right? Bet I, bet I made the meeting with that one.
I'll have a big dream tonight.
Did you wanna, uh, would, would you like an update on both, um, the CIP and I can also give a quick update on Stonegate Landing, if you'd like?
Why don't you do that?
Okay, so, maybe we'll start.
Uh, Diane?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Diane.
Oh, great.
We can hear you, but we can't see you.
Yeah. All right, Russ, you wanna give it a shot?
Sure, let's give it a shot. I'll start real quick with Stonegate Landing, a quick update. I talked with Mr. Federoff today. He's still, things are moving forward, uh, that they are
The camera?
A little slow with the COVID nineteen and some delays that they've been getting. Regarding the generator, we did actually, you know, we've been asking for a sizing, um, for the generators, so we actually, uh, some of our electrical engineers at GHD did a sizing. We're down to a twenty-five kilowatt generator, so Richard's reaching out to Kohler and Cummings and some of the better brands to get that going. Um, he is planning on wiring the, uh, flow meter, um, on Wednesday. His electrician was in quarantine, so he couldn't get to it, or that's what I was told. Um, and then he still has been in touch with Hayes Pump. We're looking for next Wednesday to meet out there to go over the, uh, specifics for the PLC and the SCADA there. And then
I was so lost today, I didn't
Hey, we got Diane. Diane, can you hear us? All right, go ahead, Russ.
Russ, on the sizing of the generator, uh, does that figure in the electric heat that's gonna be required for that station also?
I, I did send that to our engineer. I said that to have a provision for, uh, future heater. It's not a tremendously large heater. Um, and that, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable from the pump and Harold, I'm sure you've seen numerous pump stations too, that for something of this size, uh, you know, we feel a twenty-five is, you just don't want something bigger than you, you need. But Richard was asking about fuel source, natural gas versus diesel, and we're gonna go the natural gas route, which is a little more dependable. Um, so he's still moving forward, uh, with everything. I'm, I'm satisfied with, you know, he's being responsive and moving forward.
Nope, good.
I'm happy that we go
Correct, agreed. Any other questions on Stonegate, or, or would you like me to move on to the, the CIP?
Yeah, I got on that. Uh, Russ would be the, the daily check-ins. I haven't seen any, uh, any reports on that. I, I think, uh, next time you speak to Mr. Federoff, it'd be nice for him to pass things on.
Understood.
Just give us a little, little update on that, whether it's run hour that type of stuff, and, uh, just, you know, we just wanna make sure that he's doing, you know, his diligence at this point in time.
Right, that the daily checks haven't turned into weekly checks and eventually monthly checks.
Yeah.
Understood. Yep, I will be in touch with, uh, the develop, Mr. Federoff for those.
Thanks, Russ.
You got it. Good with, uh, Stonegate? Shall we move on to the CIP?
Yeah, go ahead.
Great, so, I am, uh, I invited Craig, the other engineer, on the line today. Uh, Craig was the actual, uh, author of the majority of that report. He put, uh, a lot of the, uh, the thought into it and the development of it. Uh, so, uh, just so the commission knows, we did submit a draft CIP. I emailed it just to, uh, Harold, just so he could review it. I wanted to present the commissioners, uh, more of a final product. So, uh, Harold got back to us with his comments. We had a few follow-up questions for him. Um, and I think it's coming together, uh, within expectation. We've tried to make it clear on what the annual budgetary amount should be for, for planning in the future. Uh, the one section, Harold, that we still owe you is the SCADA section. We expect to have that. I expect to have that to you by Wednesday. I'll send you just the write-up on the SCADA. And then, once we receive comments, we'll package up, uh, everything together in a final report.
Yeah, it's just, uh, to me, it was a great report that you guys did. It was, you know, I was, I was very happy with it. I've been overwhelmed at work in some sense, so I, I, I did my best to try and get the information to you. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to do anything till Saturday, so, uh, and I think it was, you know, just the comments, uh, like I say, I think you guys did it, you know.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, exactly.
We are, Harold, just so you know, on the SCADA, I did, I spoke with our specialist today on it. We will have some questions. Maybe we can have a quick fifteen or twenty-minute, um, teams meeting, uh, once I send you the SCADA, just a couple of things to go over.
Thanks for stopping by.
Very good.
I try not to do this to you again.
At least for two weeks.
Hi, Paul.
Yeah, can you, uh, your voice is coming through on the presentations here. Is your, can you mute it off or what?
I can. I can't hear you guys. Yeah, I can't hear you guys, so I didn't know it was coming through. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I think you're fine now, Diane.
All right. I think she, I just called her.
That could be interesting when people don't know that they're being heard. Who knows what's gonna be said? You shouldn't have told her anything. Now, so I'm
He was talking to Carrie to figure out how to run this Zoom thing, and now Carrie just left, so she don't have nobody to talk to now.
Could be all right now.
Yeah.
Diane, unmute yourself. No, you, so they can hear you, so.
I can't hear them, though. Well, I guess I was hearing them.
You're good now, Diane.
Okay.
All right, I can barely hear you, Woody, but that's, that's on my end.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
All right, Craig, uh, is there any more on it? I'm sorry for the interruption there.
No, no, I mean, unless there's any other questions, um, from Harold, but I think we, uh, sent back a couple little questions. Actually, I can ask him now if we have a couple minutes, but um, if we wanna, you know, maybe, I don't know if that's proper for a commissioners meeting. Harold, maybe we can chat offline?
Yeah, either way, that's fine. Uh, like I say, I, uh, I could give you a quick little thing of, no, we back to the spare pumps, which I was just reading the email just before I got to the meeting. Uh, at those, uh, pump stations, we do have all, you know, two pumps operating at all stations except for the Route one thirty-eight pump station. My, my thing that I was trying to address is that, uh, there's no spare pumps for the dry pit submersible or dry well submersible pumps, and, uh, we discussed that with the board, uh, several times of trying to build up an inventory of that, and we all know that, you know, uh, some of the challenges sometimes through the procurement of, uh, purchasing these, uh, these pumps and stuff like that, but, uh, I think we'll get there eventually, uh, trying to get, you know, spare pumps, uh, a backup, 'cause the thing about the dry pit submersible pumps is when they do fail, you can't operate them at all, and, uh, and typically, they're gonna be sent out for service, uh, you know, on pump itself, because, you know, you usually have a big failure.
Harold, is there a big price in the, uh, submersible pump, the best, versus a conventional one? You wanna run that again?
We'll get a little feedback.
All right.
I mean, typically, uh, Paul, they go anywhere from, you know, say five, six thousand dollars, probably up to thirty thousand, forty thousand dollars.
Yeah. All right. Nothing to mention on that one.
Yeah, so Craig
Go ahead, Craig.
Oh, sorry, sorry, go ahead, Harold.
Uh, it actually was the chairman and stuff like that, but that was one of the items. I wasn't sure if some of the other questions, uh, like I say, I was just looking at it, at your email quick, uh, Craig, before I got to the meeting tonight. I, I just received it, and, uh, so, uh, I wasn't sure what the other questions were, but, uh, I mean, if, I think, uh, you wanna go through the report a little bit, and, uh, I'm not sure if the commissioners have looked at it or had a chance to look at it yet.
They, they have not, Harold. I, I only sent it to you, so I was trying to, I just wanted to, yeah, get your feedback first before we, but we should, we should, I think these, this does answer our question, Craig, you know, I think the way it was explained is we do want an additional pump in the inventory in case one goes down. They have it close by. They can, they can get it in there. Um, so, will, it take us, you know, a couple days, day, day or so to wrap this up, and then, um, what I'll do is I'll email Diane, uh, a final, a final draft is what I'll call it, for all the commissioners to take a look at. We did our best to kind of, kind of keep this thing as, um, you know, straightforward as possible.
Yep.
So I'll send Diane the final draft, which then the commission can review it, and happy to entertain any questions after that. So, so we should see that this week.
Yeah, uh, if I, if I elaborate a little bit more, Russ, on the Park Street Pump Station, that was our latest one that, uh, got rehabilitated. Uh, like many things, we, you know, we had, uh, other things that we wanted to take care of at that station, but, uh, at the time, uh, the money wasn't, we didn't have enough money, uh, in the contract to perform some of the work, so things didn't quite get done that we thought were still pretty critical at that station to take care of, and, uh, I, I don't want those things to slip away again, so, but, like I say, overall, I thought the report was, was, was very good on, on your part.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Diane, is there anybody here from Bristol County, uh, the building?
If you're talking to me, Paul, I can't hear you.
Yeah, was Justin coming into this meeting tonight, or?
No. I'm gonna mute, I'm gonna mute myself and listen through Harold's device.
Okay.
Is the commission all set with, uh, Craig and myself?
Uh, as far as, any other questions for the gentlemen here?
None from me.
Okay. I guess that's it, uh, Russ and Craig.
Thank you very much.
Your attention with this matter, and we appreciate it.
Always. Thank you for the time. We appreciate it too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice meeting you all.
All right.
Take care, Craig. Take care, Russ.
Thanks.
Diane? Uh, Dayton, uh, Fire Backflow Prevention Inspection Results?
Was there any problems with it, Diane?
No.
Uh, Paul, speak to Diane. Uh, everything passed with the backflow preventer inspection reports.
Okay.
They were just, you know, so we had no issues with that.
Right.
We did approve the drain layer, Diane. Okay. So the drain layer's been approved. Uh, GHD, we had a discussion with, uh, updates with
Okay. All right. Bristol County Building, anybody there? Do we have any information on that?
Five fifteen, Paul, they want to do. Five fifteen.
Okay, all right. Harold, you wanna go over your superintendent's report?
Uh, basically, uh, it was about Bristol Aggie, uh, power plant, hasn't been using much. Uh, I recently read the Dayton Industry, uh, water meters at that facility. Uh, that, you know, they got new owners over there, but, uh, they're not using too much water over there.
What are the, uh, what are the plans with that building? Any idea yet?
I have no idea. I know it was recently sold, uh, Paul, but I'm not sure what their plans are in the future of that facility.
Okay. All right, uh.
We have to discuss what we wanna put in a budget number for capital improvements based on the GHD report, and we need that, we need that number this week.
All right. Uh, what do we got for numbers on it? I don't have a copy of that. Diane? Do you have any numbers on that?
I'm trying to look at it right now, Chairman.
What, what kind of numbers you're looking for, Paul?
We're looking for the capital, a number for capital improvement based on the GHD report.
Okay, I, I haven't seen the GHD report.
I have it in front of me right now.
So what do they recommend?
For a critically one to three year, they're looking at two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. And if I give you just a little quick synopsis on that, it's the power plant pump station, evaluate existing wet well capacity. And the justification is the wet well may be undersized, which could be causing issues with the pumps. Uh, we've known about that quite a bit. Power plant pump station, replacement of existing pumps. Pumps are twenty-four years old and have visible cavitation issues. We replaced the pumps probably about six or eight years ago, and we still have the same issues of cavitation, pumping pellets being worn. So that's an ongoing issue when the power plant's been running. So they have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for that as a as a very critical priority. Uh, the next item is the Bristol County Agricultural School Pump Station. Wet well enforced may be, may main, maybe undersized, which could be a reason for high level alarm. The next item is the Route one thirty-eight pump station, replace submersible pumps. One pump was replaced in twenty twenty, but the other pump is twenty-nine years old and is the original pump. That's one that we have, uh, what we call flooded suction centrifugal pumps in there. We've been converting all our pump stations into dry pit submersible pumps, and the difference with that, uh, is if the dry well ever became flooded, those pumps could be submerged and still operate, and it seems that the industry has been changing over to those types of pumps. Uh, they are a cheaper cost versus the, uh, the centrifugal pumps that we presently have, but, uh, it just seems that the, the electrical shops, uh, uh, there's not as many to repair these pumps, and pots have become challenging, so everybody's been moving towards these dry pit submersibles. So at the Route one thirty-eight pump station, they have a value of sixty thousand for that one pump. I'm not sure. Uh, they have other items in here of replacing uh, the heating system, and that, that's something that I like to do at those stations of possibly going to these, uh, heat pumps where you could ha, actually have, uh, the heat pump and possibly if you needed cooling in the summertime for, if you had some of the drives in the stations to keep them cool and operating. We have natural gas in there presently, and that's at the Town Hall in the Route one thirty-eight pump We have natural gas in there presently, and that's at the town hall in the Route 138 Pump Station. So in the first one to three years, they have a price of two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars.
Alright.
I think we could prioritize some of these things, but uh, the very critical ones that they have, highly critical uh, the power plant pump station, which we know has been a ongoing problem for a long time there. And we know that we don't own the property at that pump station, we, we got granted an easement at that and space is very limited. But I think we need to have a plan put in place for that. Do I think we need two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in the first year? No. But I think we gotta spend some money and some engineering to see, you know, evaluations what our options are at these stations.
Harold, what do you advise us to do as far as going for one or two pumps or?
Well, I think uh, there's a lot of downtime, there's a lot of coordination that would have to do with the power plant, when's the best time to do this? I think you want to look at and see, everybody I've ever spoken to with the different engineers that we worked with, and even some of the uh, sales rep, they all pointed in the direction that the wet well was too small at that station. So was there something that we could have GHD do and evaluate that site and say, can we, can we put in an overflow tank or something that like similar to what we're doing at Bristol Aggie? To get us more capacity in the wet well, or possibly do we change those pumps? And instead of having a dry pit submersible, they also have, you know, a wet well submersible which runs on a rail system, similar to what we have at uh, if you seen those pumps Paul, if you remember the pumps at uh, Stonegate Landing?
Yeah.
Where, where you had it, had the pumps directly in the wet well, and they're on a rail system and they couple down into the wet well and they pump up from that point, uh,
Yeah.
We still, we see a lot of stations going in that direction, and maybe that's something that we may want to do at the power plant. Uh, the other problem I have at the power plant is, it's a Gorman pump station. And what they did at that particular station, they gave us a backup engine. Uh, so when we have a power failure there, you don't have a generator, you have a backup engine, it runs off a DC controller. So what it does is, when the wet well uh, gets full, the, the pump will start, the gas engine will start and pump down the wet well. Once the engine, uh, once the wet well is in the off position, the engine shuts off. So you have cycling of an engine where you don't have a generator at that particular station. I think, I think you want to move in that direction at that pump station, to be honest with you. Uh, typical, the report that I read typically, when you look at uh, sewer pump stations, typically they have a shelf life of twenty years. Uh, like I say, when we started looking, and I, I was just amazed when, when we expanded the town hall and Route 138, that I just seen recently that it was, I believe thirty years that, that uh, that the school burnt down, so. The Route 138 Pump Station and the Town Hall Pump Stations are, you know, close to thirty years old at this point. And the engineer, you know, basically you have a shelf life of equipment of twenty years. You look at concrete structures, you know, fifty years plus as typical operating ranges. Uh, I think we've done a pretty decent job over the years of trying to separate the pump stations and trying to take one on every couple of years to, you know, to modernize it and stuff, so. I think, like I say, I think we want to put some money in there into our capital improvement costs. Uh, a lot of it is planned in the first year, you know, you're gonna pay for engineering work, and then you're gonna have to go out for bid to do these upgrades.
Okay, that sounds good. It looks like we're on borrowed time with a couple of these units.
Like I say, the, the, the high priorities was the power plant pump station, uh, we discussed issues with the force main at Bristol Aggie, and we're trying to get an overflow tank into there, uh, to, you know, to better the situation, but uh, those were the priorities that they had as very high. Uh, there, there's other ones that are, you know, high priorities that we can look at as in, you know, modifying the HVAC systems at the stations and stuff like that, but uh, you know, that's a little low priority, so uh, I would, you know, I would look at probably somewheres around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be my recommendation uh, for capital improvements for the first year.
Okay. Woody, what do you think? Any problems with that?
I mean uh, GHD had a two hundred and thirty-one thousand total for one to three years.
Alright, what's your recommendation?
My recommendation?
Yeah.
I would look somewheres around a hundred and fifty, or, you know, I would give you a range of, you know, one hundred to one fifty, uh, I think, like I say, you want to do some engineering work first of, you know, evaluating a little bit further of seeing what we need to do at this point in time and what's our, what's our options gonna be.
Tommy, any, what's your feelings on that?
Hey, there I am.
You good?
Sorry, I got it. How do I put my screen, how do I put my? How do I put my uh, screen?
This video?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a little loud at Tom.
Oh, start video. Sorry, guys. Diane, see if we can unmute Tommy.
I'm sorry Woody, I didn't hear what you said.
Tom needs to be unmuted.
Thank you.
Ah, there you go.
Diane, you did it.
Okay, so Harold said quite a bit there, a couple of questions.
Go ahead Tom.
But I, I don't know if you want to suspend this Paul, because you got some guests showing up for your five fifteen?
Yeah, we're gonna have to hold on you and uh, and bring uh, the Aggie. We'll put you on standby Tom, alright?
Okay.
Diane, is anybody there? Anybody here from there?
Yep, Dave DeFortis is there.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Alright, oh, he's coming in good.
He's muted now.
Dave?
Unmute him.
I can see him.
Yeah.
Can you guys hear me? Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you now.
Can you unmute yourself Dave?
Yeah, I just did, I think, I think it's coming in.
He's coming through here.
Yep, I can hear him.
Yeah.
Well.
Okay.
Okay Dave, go ahead.
Uh, so I was just following up, uh, I know there have been questions about the, the overflow tank on the sewer down at the Bristol Aggie.
Yeah.
We had been in the process of negotiating uh, with Vinagro, our site contractor, to get that tank and been back and forth a little bit with them. And it's been a, a while, uh, so, I don't know what everyone knows, but they, because of the phasing on this job, they were moving from Gilbert Hall, their current population, to the new CSE building. And, and then we renovate Gilbert Hall, they're not adding any people to the, the population right now. The other thing, at Gilbert Hall, you know, we're using, or excuse me, at the new CSE building, we're using these low flow fixtures, plus, I don't know if everybody knows, we added eight composting toilets over here, so uh, in the, in the building, I think there's a total of maybe uh, fourteen total uh, toilet fixtures, eight of them are composting fixtures. So they, you know, they go into a composting system which is separate from the sewer system. But then the other last five or six fixtures, I think are tied into the sewer system. I know there was a concern about increasing the flow and eventually when the population increases, whether the flow will be increased. And Jim, Jim, I think he's talked to Tom a little bit, because we're kind of at a point where, because of the phasing, they're moving into CSE building, and we have to go do the renovations in Gilbert Hall, so I just wanted to make sure I was available to answer any questions. I did send the schedule to Diane, uh, just moments ago actually, because I had to get all the dates, the delivery dates of the tank. I, I, I can answer any questions or give you any more information that anybody has.
Uh, the building department is looking uh, for any information as far as uh, the okay to sound off, uh, to grant occupancy permit? But we've, we've had some problems trying to get feedback, uh, and this is important before we uh, sign off on it on our end.
Yep.
You have a list of things that, you know, had to be done and what has been done?
As far as the overflow?
Yeah, the overflow, yeah.
Yeah, I, I have a, and I uh, I sent, uh, I think Justin Gould has, has been consulting with you guys.
Yep.
Installation, so we got a sketch that was produced by the, by the architect and the engineers. And I think that's been vetted with Justin. And that's the, the sketch we're using to purchase and install the, the overflow tank. And I, my understanding is this has been reviewed and vetted with Justin, just to make sure that the design was adequate.
How long ago did he get that info?
Uh.
Feeling correct?
Let's see, the date on the, you know, they sent me a PR for me to get pricing. This was like last August, this PR I got, and I just am finalizing the pricing with Vinagro now. But I think Justin was part of that vetting and making sure that the design was gonna work prior, prior to that, so.
Paul?
Yeah.
Um, David just sent me a little while ago a list of um, the delivery of the tank, the commencement of installation on or about, and the complete installation of tank and restoration work, so they, I didn't get it to you because I didn't want to send you, it's all emails in the middle of the meeting.
Yeah. Alright, Harold, did you hear that?
I did hear that, uh, Chairman, uh, Dave, the, the question I have is, I mean, can you just give us, none of us have seen the time schedule on this uh, tank installation, could you uh, just give us a rough idea when this is going to happen? It just seems that uh, you know, the occupancy permit we got, you know, we were made aware of it last week, and it was kind of a surprise uh, to myself and probably to the board members that they were already looking for a, you know, and I understand your work schedule, and it just seemed that uh, it seemed like we were out of the loop of what was transpiring or how, you know, how, how things were progressing on the site over there, and uh, so those are the issues that I've had, and you know, we've talked about this tank and uh, we've been going through Weston and Sampson, Justin Gould is, you know, he, you know, he was waiting for something from, you know, whether it was Viagra or you know, of the design of the tank or the architects at Bristol Aggie, and uh, we just weren't getting any feedback and stuff like that, and then
Right.
like I say, all of a sudden uh, now I understand, uh, you know, a little bit of, okay, you, you got, you got the new building that, I mean, you got the existing building, the Gilbert Hall, that you guys have quite a bit of work to do in there, and uh, it just seemed that all that, you know, I understand that you want to get the students over to the new building at this point in time, was that correct?
Yeah, it's, the occupancy, you know, there are six different buildings that are part of this project. And this is, so, we had finished some renovations at the Agmech Building, which is a relatively small building, it's where they work on the motors.
Okay.
Early on, like, because of the way the project is phased, it, it like needs one thing to build on the other, in order for us to go do renovations in Gilbert Hall, which is the existing school, we had to finish the new science building, and then basically take the whole population and the building is used as like its swing space, so they move in, but then there's no one in Gilbert Hall, and then we do the renovations in Gilbert Hall. So the project is not entirely complete till the end of the summer.
Okay.
Harold.
Yep.
So this is kind of, this first move is just so we can renovate, and so now there's no, nobody in Gilbert Hall. Well, there actually is a small part portion of Gilbert Hall, that's the climbing lab in the back.
Okay.
Because of the space requirements, they're kind of bigger classrooms and they needed a big place to store tree climbing equipment and stuff like that. So there is a little tiny bit of that building that's still occupied. Uh, but then the population moves to CSE building, which is the science building. And then that allows us to do the renovations in Gilbert Hall. And then, then there are the last three buildings that get, that we are kind of just starting. Well, Student Commons is the building, I don't know if you've been by or familiar with the site, but the science building is the bigger new building. Uh, the Student Commons is their new uh, kind of cafeteria, eventually it will be. They'll move out of Keith Hall into the Student Commons, that's the next building to be completed in, in the, in the process, and then Gilbert Hall, we turn over at the end of the summer.
Okay.
Vince Cape Harbor is a small building in the back that uh, gets turned over like in May. And then the final building is the dairy, new dairy barn, which is uh, gets over in the fall of, of this year, so. Like I say, the, the, the occupancy is not for the entire project, but just for a piece of it that allows us to go into Gilbert Hall and start those renovations.
Uh, Dave, another question I would have is, I know that a lot of construction work took place over there, I know recently we, uh, you came over and met me for the first time, uh, we had a high level alarm, I believe you guys were either coordinating some lines at that facility and stuff like that, and discharging the sewer system. And I went, you know, uh, looked at the well, we had some odd issues, uh, through all the construction, I know a lot, dirt, debris, everything gets into the, you know, into the sewer system, have all those lines been checked? But again, to make sure that they are clean at this point in time, that there's no construction debris.
Harold, I'm having trouble just hearing the last little bit.
Uh, what I'm, Dave, what I'm, I'm looking for is, has anybody looked at the new sanitary sewer system that you installed over there? Uh, any of the manholes that possibly could have some construction debris over there where things were a pain, or there might be some debris in some of the manholes that I'd like to get checked before this happens.
Uh, I don't think we've checked them, I think as, we've connected to the manholes. Uh, I think we were in touch with Justin on the connections we made.
Yeah.
Uh, but if we want to check any, any manholes, we're, we're happy to do that Harold, whenever.
Yeah, I like to, you know, just to make sure, because I mean, uh, the other day, you know, to see some fluid debris, I, you know, I, I, I see like a chunk of wood, you know, and I understand this stuff ends up down there, some uh, water.
you know, and I understand this stuff ends up down there, some water, water I removed. So it's just, you know, uh, I just want to make sure that the structures are all sound. We don't want a backup to occur anyways on the site, just to verify that.
Absolutely, we can do that whenever, whenever you want to do it. If you want us to set something up with you or, or Justin or whoever.
Yeah, you know, just to make sure everything is, is clean.
Absolutely.
You know, when, you know, when there's the grease traps, you know, for the, the new cafeteria, bill, whatever the case, you just want to make sure everything is cleaned up at this point.
Sure. Now, we're not using the new cafeteria yet, but we can certainly look in the grease traps. But we can certainly check all the manholes that we've connected to or any other manholes that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, just to verify things. I, I remember when, it, it, it was one of these, uh, when they were tapping the line out on Sanestree. And I'm not sure if it got fixed, but it seemed like there was a little bit of, you know, uh, eye and eye coming in where the connection was made. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we eliminate as much groundwater or, you know, everything sealed up as tight as possible. Because we all know that it's not a very big pump station at that facility.
Sure, yeah.
Hi Dave, when, when do you expect completion on that, the pump station?
Uh, I think I said mid, mid March.
I see, Paul, if I speak a little bit, I got the email that Dave sent Diane. It has a delivery of the tank on or about February 26th. It has a commence installation on or about March 1st. Complete installation tank restoration work of March 12th.
Okay, uh. I will, we'll have to notify the building department, you know, on its schedule.
Yeah, I sent a copy to Jim because he, he had also asked uh, to stay informed.
Okay.
When this is, when are you looking to occupy that new building, Dave, at this point?
Well, so uh, so that's this week. The teachers actually, I had been working through Jim and with Jim. And uh, I think they're trying to get the students back in Thursday. The students have been, have been off campus for, I think since the, before Christmas, actually.
Okay.
And I, I, I know that the plan is to, to not have them come back to Gilbert Hall, but have them come to the science building. And I think those teachers are actually are getting set up in there now, so.
Okay, any, any other questions? Go ahead, Tom.
Hi, Tom. Oops, you're muted, I think.
Diane, you got a mute, Tom?
There you go, stop doing that. Okay, so ye- yes, um, David, if.
Thank you, Diane.
David, if you don't mind, I'd like to read the email that Jim sent you this morning, reference to the.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, I, I think Diane's got a copy of it and some other key people over at Aggie. Says Dave, please plan to give the sewer department an update at tonight's meeting, which he did. Diane will send you the Zoom information. As we discussed on Friday, the current school population is only limited school scheduled due to the pandemic. Also, the installation of low use fixtures for the CE buil-, CSE building should be reduced the amount of flow than we have previously experienced from the campus. That does not allow anyone to deter from the importance of the installation of the overflow tank. I expect that the tank will be installed expediently. And please understand that no further final inspections will occur on campus, campus buildings until the sewer department is satisfied with the overflow tanks installation. Additionally, I have not seen any final affidavits on this CSE buildings. I cannot issue a TCO without them. So I, I think um, the board should be satisfied with that. You alluded to contacting building commissioner, Paul, I think is already well aware of what needs to happen. And uh, the Gilbane uh, company is very much on top of this right now. I think everyone's working together to try to resolve this matter.
Okay, very good. Dave, uh, we want to thank you for your, uh, your appearance tonight. And the information you gave us is very important. Uh, it's most important that we keep communication very current because we're getting towards the end of things and uh, you know, we, we want to, we want to get you in there, but we want to do it right.
Yes.
Okay?
You bet.
All right, anybody else have any questions for Dave?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Hey, can you yell it?
It wasn't that bad, was it?
There you go.
Okay. All right, very good, thank you.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Dave.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, Diane. You, you're on.
I can hear you.
Can you hear us now?
A little bit, Paul, go ahead.
All right, we want to thank you for putting this together tonight.
Didn't do a very good job of it.
Well, hey, listen, there's always a lot of bugs on the first trip out, you know? You're, you're dealing with a, a new program up there. Uh, the minutes, I don't think anybody got any, but we'll, we'll put them in for the next meeting.
I, I sent you a copy of them, or Joel sent you a copy.
Oh, did she? Yeah, I had my secretary pull uh, any inventory out and nothing showed up yet, so. We'll, we'll have to, I don't think anybody got any, did anybody get a copy of it?
I did.
I did.
Yeah, well, I didn't get it, so maybe she's running my, my old.
I don't think there's anything that has to get accepted tonight. I think it can wait if you rather.
Yeah, yeah. All right, and Diane, make sure she's got my right fax number, my right email address.
Okay, I'll make sure.
Or there's always a Y missing there.
That could be.
Yeah. Uh, let's see, uh, I think that's about all we have.
Well, just the decision on the capital, again.
What's that again?
How much capital do you want to put in your budget?
Okay, Harold, what did we come up with?
Harold's muted.
Harold's muted again, okay. Hold on.
Are you getting good at that, Diane?
Hey, I'm not doing that, somebody else is.
Hello, Harold.
I'm here, can you hear me?
What was, yeah, what was your final number that we're going to submit?
I'm not sure if all members were listening early. Tom, did you hear anything earlier on the GHD pump station?
I heard a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes, I, I just had some questions and then uh, we'll go from there, fine tune the number.
Uh, basically, uh, some of the critical issues that they had, uh, Tom, was the power plant pump station, evaluate existing wet well capacity.
I heard all that, Harold.
Okay.
Yes, I just had some questions directed to you.
Yep.
And then we'll help finalize the number.
Okay.
So um, I agree with the engineering, that's sort of what he was working on already, Russ. And uh, but that's fine, we can expend money for specific engineering, I agree with that.
Okay.
I also agree on, um, you know, baby steps, but moving in the right direction.
Yep.
Um, my question is, is that roof on that sewer building here at the town hall needs to be addressed? Would that be a capital expense or you have, do you have money in your budget to fix that?
I think we have money in our present budget to take care of that, Mr. Ferry.
So with, with that said.
Which, which I don't, you know, and I don't think, I mean, the evaluation was more of equipment versus, I mean, there was some structural and stuff like that, but I think that's something that we can take care of within our budgets already.
Right, sorry, so you already knew what my second part was, does, does his investigation look at those things? Okay, so, so if you don't need roof money, I do agree the hundred and fifty thousand's a good step.
If, if I, if I expand a little bit on that, uh, Tom.
Yep.
Their recommendations, okay, uh, which was, you know, pretty critical stuff. For the first one to three years, it came up with two hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Yeah, that's, that's for the actual work, right, not engineering.
Uh, I, I think that's both. I mean, when they look at the power plant, it's evaluate existing wet well, wet well maybe, you know.
Well, I'd like to recommend, and I think it'll help, and Russ might disagree, I, I, I'm not sure. But I think we ought to skip the evaluation of Aggie while it's under construction, then look at it as a completed project. And let's focus on a power plant and one thirty-eight by Dunkin' Donuts.
I, I fully agree with you, Tom, at this point. And uh, like I say, typically you've got to have a specification of what you want to take place. And then, you know, look at cost of doing the job.
Right, so I, I, I recommend.
I think the first phase is going to be engineering at this point in time.
Yeah, the one fifty would be way more than enough, correct? Yes.
Because you're going to need some sort of specifications. I mean, are there other things that we can do? Uh, possibly replacing pumps at Bristol Aggie? Yes, as an interim, but I think we got a, you know, the big project is going to be long term. We're replacing the backup engine and maybe reconfiguring that whole pump station.
Uh, you got to mute, unmute Tom. Uh, Diane, can you unmute him?
Yeah, I heard him. So are you guys all in agreement for the one fifty?
Yeah, I don't know whether he's added some more, the last bit of information never came out.
Me or Tom?
No, Tom. Nothing yet.
He's muted again, sorry, I'm not doing that, I don't know who is.
There you go, so.
There he is.
You're back.
Yes, so the one fifty is just for engineering?
I think a majority of it's going to be for engineering, Tom. Uh, I think there's some smaller items that we may have to do in the interim before, before the big upgrade of the project happens at the power plant.
So the, the Dunkin' Donuts pumping station, I'm concerned with.
I am too.
If we're going to redesign the whole thing and we get that pressure line that we don't have. If he's going to bypass it at the same time.
You're going to look at substantially more money. I mean, you're looking at almost, you spend that Park Street pump station for an upgrade.
Yeah, I, I, that one fifty, definitely do the engineering. It should take care of some incidentals, but it won't go much further than that.
That is correct. I mean, we're already looking at a one-year capital improvement.
Yep.
I mean, their recommendation was two hundred and thirty-one thousand.
That is about half what you have in your reserve. It's just on, just over half, a hundred and fifty thousand.
Is what we have in our reserve right now, Daniel?
Two ninety-four.
We have two ninety-four in our reserve.
Correct.
We, we're talking about a special article, right?
No, just to put in our capital to use. I mean, we're not making a particular purchase, we're going to use it as needed. So you can't put in an article to, for monies to use as needed. So we have a capital line in our budget, so you would put it in the capital. You'll have to explain it when you meet with whoever you have to meet with, Brett. And then whoever after that you have to meet with, but it won't go, it won't be a special article. That, that's for a particular purchase or, or a pump station plan or whatever, pump station rehab.
Please talk to me slowly, I want to understand what we're going to vote on tonight then. So are we transferring money or we?
Tom?
Yep.
Basically, I was just looking at the one to three years, okay? If I go to the three to five year, they're looking at town hall pump station, replacing the pumps there and possibly installing a bar rack at that station, okay? Those numbers are, uh, GHD came up with a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Then they went out to ten plus years, okay? Bristol Aggie, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, Lincoln Avenue, two hundred and fifteen thousand.
Yes.
Park Street, two hundred and fifteen thousand, Route one thirty-eight. And uh, this is replace new pumps and evaluate pump restructures. Uh, I think that's sixty-five thousand. So they're looking at pump replacement at those stations, uh, ten years.
Yes, I, I, I understood that earlier.
Yeah.
When you described it, my question is more towards what, what is this board doing tonight? Are we transferring money or are we creating an article?
You're tran-, you're.
You're taking money out of your, out of our reserve account, right?
Correct.
Right, I want to understand what the motion's going to do. That's, that's when I, I'm sorry to be difficult, I just want to understand what we're doing. So, so we need a motion to transfer money out of the capital expense?
No.
Out of our reserve account and put into our capital, correct, Diane?
Correct.
Okay.
GHD recommendation was two hundred and thirty-one thousand for, for one to three years.
Yeah, but we don't have that anyway, so it. I, I like the one fifty and it gives us a little bit of emergency access monies. But if we need more than that, the towns promised they would back us up on it.
Correct.
So I'll make that in the motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Hi.
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 Hi, uh. Do you think we got a little wiggle room to pick up another pump?
I think we could.
We could not?
I think we do, uh, I'm going to have to get you some prices on that, Paul.
All right.
Except for the Dunkin' Donuts one, he might be changing them, so.
Well, Dunkin' Donuts, eventually I would like to go to drive this to the rest for directly, correct, Tom?
All right, uh, when do you think you might have some ideas on that, Harold?
Uh, I'm going to try and contact some vendors over the next week and uh, I'll give you some numbers.
All right.
I know Bristol Aggie is probably around five to six thousand.
How much?
Five to six thousand. Five thousand.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any other questions? Everybody clear?
Bristol Aggie, we're moving forward on this at this point?
Yes.
So we're going to give the okay.
They can't get no other inspections, final inspections done until we are satisfied.
Okay, okay.
So does the board need to vote on the occupancy or allowing in the occupy? Diane, is there a request for that? You're muted.
You're muted, Diane.
You just know what's coming out, you're muted, Diane.
Okay, sorry, I couldn't hear you.
So is there something that board needs to act on for the occupancy? Did you, did you get any requests?
Harold, tell me what he said.
Diane, they want to know, what is the vote on for the occupancy of Bristol Aggie?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Tom.
Okay. So you need a vote?
We need a vote for the occupancy of the new building. Correct. Subject two.
Correct.
All right. All right. I'll make a motion. I'll step down and make a motion that we take a vote on an occupancy permit for the Bristol County Agricultural School. Estimated time will be sometime in February or March.
That's for the tank installation, Paul.
Yeah. And I think that's probably the only thing holding us up on that, isn't it?
There's still work that has to be done on the other, on, on the existence, on the existing building. The good thing, Paul, of what my understanding was tonight is they've got a lot of fixture work to take care of in the Gilbert Hall. Uh, hopefully with the lower floor fixtures in the new building.
All right, so the motion, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Anything else?
So somebody should sign that building permit, Diane?
Um, Paul.
Or get the approval?
I don't know. I don't know how it works because last time they didn't ask for our signature with Stonegate letting the person tie in. They didn't, they did it without us, so without us signing anything.
So I'm assuming the building.
I'll find out.
The building commissioner is going to need to know, I'm assuming from the board that they approved this as of tonight.
Yes.
Pending recommendations, right.
Okay. Any other questions? Problems? Anybody need money? All right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Woody, you're on. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Very good.
Good night.
Diane, you have any questions?
No, but Paul, hang on after.
Okay.
So I can get your email address.
All right, okay. All right.
Okay.
That's it. See you later. Okay.
Okay, Paul, talk to Harold.
Yeah. Hello, Harold.
Harold, talk to Paul.
Yes, Paul. Yes, I'm listening.
You, you know the new pump we bought a while back?
For Bristol Aggie?
It was after Bristol Aggies?
We bought one for Bristol Aggie about five years ago, I'd say. We bought one for Route 138. Route 138 pump station was a traditional centrifugal. We got pricing to go dry pit commercial, but at the time it was double the cost. And we would have had to do some retrofit and to get that pump to get into that station.
Yeah.
Uh, so right now we got a pump that's not installed at that station that it's ready to go. Every pump station that typically gets in design, one pump should handle all your flow going to the station in which we've been operating, have one pump at that station. So.
So if that pump goes tomorrow, we can throw the other one right in? Or do we have to do some modifications?
You need, you, we need to hire a contractor to get that in. And electrically, you got to hire an electrician to get that. That is correct.
Okay, so there, there's no modifications to the pump. It could be installed, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I wanted. Yeah, all right. All right, that's it. Diane?
Yep, all set.
All right, we'll see you later, everybody. Thank you, Harold.
All right, thanks, Paul.
Okay, see you later. Bye bye.
Yeah, nice.
How many years you been 3-1?
I have long.